Now being recorded.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Health of Wednesday, June 10th, 2020. This meeting is being Zoom recorded and some of us are here in the office. We are, however, abiding by the governor's orders and special distancing. And the meeting also is in compliance with the governor's recommendations and guidance. We are in compliance with open meeting law. So we'll call the meeting to order and do we have a flag down here? Oh, we can do it. Okay, if we were joining, a pledge allegiance to the flag, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. First order of business would be to review, discuss, and act on appointing Marilyn Edge as health agent. Now I need the letter. Marilyn Edge has soldered her position as the part-time inspector for Western Bristol County Tobacco Control. Both of us are back in the office. She will be assisting me with compliance checks and responding to complaints. Please add her to the agenda for the next Board of Health meeting to appoint her as a health agent. If possible, please appoint her for the next fiscal year as well, as we may not be conducting compliance checks until then. Marilyn was our tobacco coordinator, tobacco enforcement for years prior, and then she had retired and now she is back working as a part-time inspector on tobacco control. As the Board of Health, we can only recommend to the selectmen that they appoint her to, as a health agent for tobacco control. This memo doesn't say whether or not the funding is there for her to be. We don't have a budget for tobacco control at this point. I'm sure there is a budget there to pay her. Do you know, Kevin, if she, if there's a budget?
Do we have a budget for her? I don't think so.
I can't, I can't hear him. Hang on, Kevin.
Am I muted? Can you hear me?
It's over here, right?
Yeah, my volume is all the way up. Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, go.
Okay. I know when she did some contract stuff for me in Lakeville, we paid her separately, but we had, we had budgeted for that. I don't know if we have a line item for her.
Yeah.
Tell me we have a line item for her.
Last time it was on grants from the state. So we did not put in a line item for her to be. I think we need to.
When she was part of the collaborative, she would just get paid straight out through the collaborative.
Right.
No, I, I don't think that exists anymore. So before we'd appoint her, we have to make sure we can pay her.
Yeah, I think we should check on the budget for this prior to any recommendations for appointment. And if there's funding for it, I mean, we can create a line. But for this fiscal year, it would have to wait until the fall, I believe, because everything's.
What I did, Tom, I apologize. Well, I think what I did in Lakeville was $300, something like that was.
That's all.
For those compliance checks, where I did them once a year in Lakeville. And she had the, the kids already. They're all trained and she, she did it for me and I would do the enforcement, of course.
Right, I still think we ought to.
By the establishment, I only had eight establishments. So if we have more with tobacco permit, she's going to have a fee for each one.
Yeah, that's about what we have, somewhere around eight. And I would like to table this for now until we get further information about if there is funding and should we create our own funding. Matt, are you on with us tonight?
Matt is not going to be coming.
Okay. So.
Mr. Chairman, motion, motion to table item agenda number one.
Thank you. I'll step down a second. A motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Kevin? I, myself. Motion to table is carried until we can, till our next meeting at least, until we get some information on how we're going to pay for this, so. Next items are, we can take them together or separate. First one is mosquito-borne diseases. Did you have anything you wanted to present? I've got something to read. Yeah, they're out here, there's basically two types of mosquito-borne illnesses, which is West Nile and triple E. There are other diseases which are rarer and I can't pronounce them, so I won't say them. But if you go to the Mass Department of Health website and look up mosquito-borne diseases, everything would be there for you to review and identify with. There are also other viruses in various countries. If you're traveling out of the country, you want to know what's, what's going on in that one. I happen to pull something off I'm going to read and it said, what is West Nile virus? West Nile virus is a mosquito-carried virus that can cause illness ranging from a mild fever to more serious disease like encephalitis or meningitis. It was first identified in the United States in 1999. West Nile is most commonly spread to people through the bite of an infected mosquito. More information about different types of mosquitoes that can spread West Nile can be found on the MDH and Mass Department of Public Health Mosquito-Borne Diseases website. People do not become infected by having direct contact with other infected people, birds, or animals. There isn't much on West Nile, but triple E is, is the one that we need to be cautious of. And I'm going to read to you, triple E. Triple E, also known as eastern equine encephalitis, is a rare but serious disease caused by a virus. The virus that causes triple E is spread through the bite of an infected mosquito. In Massachusetts, the virus is most often identified in mosquitoes found in and around freshwater, hardwood swamps, hardwood swamps. More information about different types of mosquitoes that can spread the virus can be found on the Mosquito-Borne Diseases website. Triple E virus particularly infects birds, often with no evidence of illness in the bird. Mosquitoes become infected when they bite infected birds. Then although humans and several other types of mammals, particularly horses and llamas, can become infected, but they do not spread disease. Triple E is a very rare disease since the virus was first identified in Massachusetts in 1938. Fewer than 100 cases have occurred. Over 60% of those cases have been from Plymouth and Norfolk County. Outbreaks of triple E usually occur in Massachusetts every 10 to 20 years. These outbreaks will typically last two to three years. The most recent outbreak of triple E in Massachusetts began in 2010 and concluded, included nine cases with four fatalities through 2012. So we're getting close to the revisit of triple E. The first symptoms of triple E are fever, often 103 to 106, stiff neck, headache, lack of energy. These symptoms show up three to 10 days after a bite from an infected mosquito. Inflammation and swelling of the brain called encephalitis is the most dangerous and frequent serious complication. The disease gets worse quickly and some patients may go into a coma within a week. There is no treatment for triple E. In Massachusetts, about half of the people identified with triple E died from the infection. People who survive this disease will often be permanently disabled and few people recover completely. So it's a pretty nasty disease. It is coming into the season. As far as we know at this point, as of today, there are no, they will begin testing. There are no positive mosquitoes been found anywhere in the vicinity this, this community or surrounding communities. Once they start testing, we'll have more on there. Did you want to add anything you heard today from?
Yeah.
Which one?
Yes, so there was. I'll turn the volume down. Sorry about that. We're in the same building, so we pick up the reverb. So there was a triple E conference call today with members of DPH where they told us they were looking to be a little bit more aggressive with some of their larvicide and trying to hit the mosquitoes earlier on. They might even do spraying earlier in the season. But they didn't necessarily get into that. The only thing that did come out of it is they said that mosquitoes do not carry COVID-19, which is obviously going to be the biggest question I think we're going to be asked in public health. And everybody's going to be concerned with that, but they do not carry it. But yes, triple E will be coming around and starting up again. Right now it's not here, but it'll be soon. Kevin, did you, were you able to watch it? Did you watch it?
No, I didn't get to watch it. But it's like last year, it came really early. And pretty soon it will be in July and hopefully it doesn't come, but it's most likely. So we just got to remember what we did last year. Yeah, and protect ourselves. People can also call Bristol County Mosquito Control. And I know a lot of people have private contractors as well for their yards for mosquitoes. Everything we can do, we should do it.
They did also tell us they're going to be giving us information for press releases and something else, that we'd be able to disseminate the information to. They're, they're being much more proactive this year than last year. That's all I have for now.
And I think, I think that's what came out of the last time when they were, they were saying, when next year rolls around, you got to really start spraying ahead of time. So hopefully they do.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Kevin. Moving on to old business. Review, Discuss Act, COVID-19 reopening procedures and policies. Town hall, library, prime time restaurants. I did that. Yeah. And parks, recreation, sports leagues. Todd Pilling is a health agent. He's also on the reopening committee. So I think I'll just pass this right on to him.
I do want to say that in the room with us now is also Mr. Reins, who's our park and rec director. I got the volume now. So start with town hall very quickly. We put up some plastic shields. We provided hand sanitizer. We went to split shifts for some departments. We actually relocated a couple offices to try and make some space.
Yeah, you got, you got a lot of feedback.
Just hit the mute button. Maybe? Is that better?
Is that better? I'd be glad I'm going to go back to.
So town hall, the selectmen are voting tonight.
No good. Sorry.
Okay, better?
Yeah.
Okay, so town, a selectman voting tonight on reopening town hall. We had to reopen our office because we were selling the bulky tags, which is trash, which is considered essential. So we've been opening here for a steady stream of people coming in. But we've been keeping them behind the shield. Everybody's calling ahead to place their orders. So we're just doing a quick swap with the check when they get in here and they're all wearing masks and everybody's being very cooperative. The library has gone to curbside pickup only because we can't let people in the library just yet. Prime time council on aging right now, prime time is temporarily suspended until further notice because we can't, adult daycares are not allowed yet by the governor. Restaurants, they are allowed to have outdoor dining at this point in time. To date, we've only had one restaurant approach us about having outdoor seating, which is Alice's. He is looking to just have tables outside. So people come in and take their food in a bag, go out and then sit at the table and eat it. They're not going to be having waitresses bring you out to waiters and waitresses. So we're still working on that, but it sounds like he's looking to get started tomorrow. Parks, recs, and sports leagues, sports leagues on phase two, we're giving them the green light for practices, no contact. So baseball, there's no running the bases with like first baseman standing there. They can have hitting drills and throwing and that kind of thing, but it's no live games yet. That will come with phase three. Park and Rec, which is the reason why Mr. Reins is here. They've given the green light for allowing us to open playgrounds and such. And that's basic, sorry, I had to grab my papers. So they've issued guidance on playgrounds, which hasn't. They also, in the guidance, they also talk about spray decks around pools and outdoor fitness areas and such. But they're basically saying everybody still has to wear a mask. You have to stay six feet apart while you're there. The problem that I see us having is now like basketball court and tennis court, we'll, we'll do them first, I guess, and then we'll go to playgrounds. Basketball, if they're playing five-on-five and it's contacts, that's a problem. But if it's just people shooting around, if it's tennis and they're just hitting it across the net, that's fine, but obviously you can't have a large group of people there. So Mr. Reins and I talked about that possibly now would be the time to unlock the basketball court and allow people to go in and use it.
I would like to recommend to the Board of Health that alleviate overreach of kids in there is to eliminate one of the basketball hoops completely. Take it down. That way they're not playing full court. You have a minimum of 10 kids who are going to be in there at a time, most likely because they're not going to be gathered in as a group to go out there and play. Well, five-on-five, full-length court all day long. So I think it would be a recommendation to take down at least one, one basketball hoop at every playground that we have basketball courts. That'll alleviate that problem. Because I've seen three down and three down only has up one basketball hoop at the Chiefs Road School, I believe it is. I've only seen one hoop over there right next to where their ball field is. I would recommend that I think we should have one basketball hoop at sports.
Yeah, but with one basketball hoop, you might have everybody at it.
But see, that's just the thing though, because you're eliminating that risk because in states that you can only have nine or less, and it must be a six-foot threshold distance. So that is, Mr. Pilling stated, that they would be basically just shooting around and that's it, playing horse. Whatever it may be. You know, the guys who have the season, no five-on-five games are allowed and that's just the way it is.
At, at some point, people are going to be trying to do this stuff anyway, but right, you, we don't want to encourage it, but we don't want to discourage people from getting outside.
Yeah. So the, the guidance was basketball was okay?
Yeah, the only issue that, well, yes, it said outdoors, sports is okay. But again, you're not supposed to be playing games. You're not supposed to be having.
No contact.
Right, no contact. So you can be shooting on the hoop, but you're not supposed to be playing one-on-one or five-on-five or that kind of thing. But tennis is okay. Because you're opposite sides of the.
You're far apart.
Yeah, but here's the only part before we, let me just say that the, the issue we have with that I think we're going to have is restrooms. It says that the managing entity must have the facilities cleaned at one, at least once daily and perform deep cleaning and disinfection services at least once per week. So that would mean the porta john that's here at the playground and the one at the basketball court is court is going to have to be cleaned daily. We're not set up to do that right now.
No.
So for that reason alone, we may want to keep the locks on the basketball court and the tennis court and maybe even keep the playground closed. But that's why we were here to talk about it is what do we think about this? You know, they're asking the trash be carry-in, carry-out. And take, you know, so they're taking their waste with them. And for the playgrounds, they recommend that they don't, they require normal cleaning, but do not require disinfection. However, high-touch surfaces made of plastic or metal, including grab bars and railings, tables and benches, benches should be cleaned frequently.
Who's going to be doing that?
That's why we're talking about it tonight.
Yeah.
That's a good question because where, as the town is in the spending freeze right now, our budget from Park and Rec is just, you can't spend it. So where we're at a standstill right now, the only budget that's allowed to spend money right now is what is just having to speak with the health. And I don't believe it should be the Board of Health's responsibility and you can take over fully for us, but as we do know, Kevin, that for phase one to phase four, because of the governor setting an executive order that the Board of Health has control between now until phase four is open, so.
I know sanitizer is hard to come by already and you're going to spray, you're going to spray it on a playground. Why, an hour later, you spray it again? I don't know. When, and race three is three weeks from now, probably, right?
Hey, my guess is it's going to be the 6th of July.
So, so let's go back to that. It says daily on the cleaning of the bathrooms. And we get it, what, once a week, maybe not, if that? And we want to still provide bathrooms for them.
Kevin, Kevin, the.
We can't meet that need.
Yeah, the basketball court done at, at the old police station, that's only done once a week. But with the high traffic over here behind town hall, that unit deck is done twice a week. There was a request to the Board of Health that we've continued to do, especially in the high-traffic times of the, of the year from, you know, from May until at least September, October. So he's been doing that for us. But then again, you know, how do we clean every day? And also especially cleaning, you know, handrails and that type of thing. You got I honestly, I don't have an answer to that, honestly. And I was just going to, just briefly, I know you guys haven't got the sports league yet. But I'd like to have the Board of Health put together a PDF that I could hand out to every coach who uses the field behind town hall and any of our fields in town. So that way they have the guidance in their hand. If the Board of Health wants to put together a document stating that they have received that information and they're aware of it, I think that would be a best course of action possibly. That way we can, you know, track people just in case something happens. We know who's using the facilities.
You can give them the guidance directly from the governor and have them acknowledge they've received it. So there's no excuses.
We haven't created our own guidance. The Titan Athletic Association created them. We're not going out to all their coaches, but.
Because I do have separate entities like AAU baseball who use the field, men's softball on Monday nights, but they're not going to be able to compete in a game, the softball league. So that's out for Monday nights. Then you have a gentleman that wants to do fly football also on the weekends. Now, how are you going to do that? Because fly football, you're still running up to whoever it may be who has the ball and you're grabbing their flag as, you know.
That's contact sport.
It's going to be pretty taxing, I think, to try to figure all this out.
See, the thing is, these things are in place. They're, they they're mandated from the state, so you have to follow it. So people might still, might think, oh, why, why are they going back and forth? We have to follow these guidelines.
Absolutely.
So if they don't meet that criteria, then that's, they don't meet that at that time. So if it's a contact sport, they don't meet it at this time. I just don't know about the, like I said, the, the playground. If, if, if it's mandated that we have to have it, we, daily and we can't meet that, then we're going to have to, I would say, postpone it.
I gotta say, I'm in agreeance. I, I don't think we're going to be able to clean them in any way, shape, or form. And I know kids are going to be crawling all over them, but I don't want to be out there enforcing because they're already ripping down our signs and stuff. I know we can put up permanent signs, but they're going to walk around them. We've got the swings down. And I think we just, I honestly not let enforcement go. You know, if one person goes out there with the one kid, you know, maybe we, the signs say wash your hands and clean up afterwards as opposed to don't use the playground. But I don't want to encourage people to use it, but I don't want to be policing it every minute either.
Down, be able to, for just signs to say use at your own risk, would that cover that legally? That's a question.
I think we as a health department have it's within our right to either limit the amount of people or not open. But it's the enforcement that becomes the problem. As it is, even with everything totally closed 100%, there was still people in the parks and playgrounds, you know, and no matter what we did, finally, they want to go in there, they can go in there. But, you know, it's, it'd be 24 hours a day trying to.
It's like private property too. You can't be going around the streets, going in people's property, trying to separate from each other. So it becomes a policing nightmare as we've already run into. You can go up and tell people and they're just not happy and they come right back.
Yeah.
What about making the restrooms out of order? Because there's a.
I can just have the one behind town hall removed. All the contractors telling them move it out of there and just bring it back when he sees big, because I've already had the one down at the.
My mom lives in Far River. All the parks don't have porta johns.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, I don't know. I understand that.
So, so if we can't, if we can't comply with that guidance.
Yeah, well, I can have that eliminated first thing tomorrow morning. I agree with that.
This is just, this is me just talking. We, we, we remove it because there's a contact surface right there that we can't clean every day unless somebody wants to volunteer and clean it every day. But if it's a contact surface, we can't clean every day and that's also a, a chance for transmission, then we eliminate that and folks still use their caution and be out there and I don't know if, I don't know. The other part of that is, is as well as it says to be sanitized as well. Does anybody going to go by there and spray some sanitizer? Do we have the highway department doing any of that? Or the parks, parks department going by periodically and spraying any? Right, Todd, it says we have to sanitize it, right?
Yeah, as soon as we have to sanitize the high-touch surface, high-touch surface should be cleaned frequently. Cleaning and disinfection of wooden surfaces is not recommended. So the playground's made of metal. So that we were supposed to be cleaning it frequently. It doesn't tell you how often frequently it is.
Yeah.
It's the restroom that has to be cleaned daily and sanitized once a week, which is why your idea of removing the porta john seems to make sense to me.
Absolutely. I would tend to agree with that. I can have that taken care of in the morning with a phone call to the, to the vendor.
What about the one right here in front of the Lions Division?
That is under the Lions' control, I believe. So someone had to contact them to have that removed. I believe it's a different vendor that uses, they use over there.
That last time we had an issue about cleaning that one there. We wanted to lock it and the Alliance Club was opposed to that. So I don't remember what the situation was at this time. But I do remember, do you remember that? We wanted to lock this one and they were opposed to it. You recall the occasion?
Well, we can advise them if they want to keep it there, they're going to have to.
Unless, unless we spoke to them and said, hey, if you wanted to clean it daily. If you wanted to clean theirs daily, a little quick through, you know? If you wanted to clean theirs daily, a little quick through, you know?
Yep.
Well, get rid of it.
Okay, that makes sense.
And this is for a short time until we see what phase three says, you know?
I, I don't agree with that. If I may, I'd like to just go back to the, um, earlier in the journey, you spoke about mosquito-borne diseases and I know that Triple E was here last year. And I would, um, tend to think that the Board of Health would be in control of signage again, that type of thing, when and if it does, you know, test positive when that happens. So they, you guys did produce the signage last year and I'd like to request that, you know, the, the partner go and put them up themselves again and, um, same parameters, there's only so much you can do. It's again, use it at your own risk.
Well, I wonder if we could have like a sign post that right now we could post that it's COVID-19. We could take that down and then maybe put up a Triple E sign and the COVID-19 sign may come back in the fall. Maybe it's like a permanent sign post, we can do it, but as opposed to like a, a permanent sign. It's, you know what I mean?
That's a great idea.
Maybe we could do something like that. And there's grant money for things we have to do for COVID. So we could probably get that done now.
What's there? I haven't been at a playground in a long time. What's, what's there for signage now?
We only have, um, signage that says service dogs only are utilized in our parks and playgrounds, uh, no littering and, um, some facilities are closed at certain times, but there were COVID signs that were out, there were notices that were put up and the kids just throw them down at every facility.
It was zip tied on
Zip tied on the fences, yeah.
You might, you might be able to. Might. Cause that would be additional staffing to comply with COVID-19 requirements.
Well, they wanna look at that for us maybe before we decide to take them out. See if that money we have will.
You have to look into, uh, cost for private vendor, that type of thing. Of course, you know, three bids, if it's over $10,000, you go out the bid.
We're cleaning a, a porta john.
I'm just saying if, if they're doing, but I mean, also that they're gonna be cleaning, you know, the playgrounds, surfaces, that type of thing. So.
And then what do they mean by cleaning daily? I mean, the whole gamut of cleaning a porta john?
It says in accordance with CDC guidance, outdoor areas like playgrounds generally require normal routine cleaning, but do not require disinfection.
So somebody goes by, I oh, somebody cleans up around, but not disinfected.
You need a hand washing station and put that out for people. You know, one of those $25 ones that you can rent. Chain it to the fence so nobody can steal it. Then they can wash their hands. Maybe that's another, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not
That is, that is a good point because they have the ones that, whatever, those portable ones.
Correct. They use that, um, certain times for the culture festival, I believe, out back and also for the, um, for the cows, taste of diet, that type of thing. So I, I'd have to look to see. I believe that our vendor may have that item. I can contact him to find out.
Yeah, the same vendor that has the porta johns has those.
Okay.
Normally, yeah.
Yeah.
And may, and some, and some signage that just says six, the six-foot distance, um, just the same basic stuff, that information on all the playgrounds. I don't know what else you could do when it comes to the playground.
Probably you don't have any money. You know, but we'll figure it out.
A laminated sign, a piece of paper typed out.
Well, we did that. I mean, just ripped them all down.
Uh, put a couple of zip ties on a fence, on a pole.
We did, we did that. We cut them down.
Yeah.
I don't understand why people would cut it down.
That's our dilemma. We don't understand either. But, uh, no, there's, there's been a lot of suggestions, I think, on how to proceed with this. And, and I, how do you feel? I think we ought to see if we can, if some of the grant money would be available for this.
Well, yeah, I would say, you know, we could look into it, see if the grant money can be used, see how much it would cost to clean them. And then you guys could leave it up to me to do without having the board vote to just say, yeah, we'll, we'll put up a hand washing station once a day. Somebody's gonna go in and spray with Lysol or whatever. It might be money payable to do this.
No, we still have that procedure. Just check in. We just see what, we, we, we know, cause people might ask me, wow, what happened, you know? I wanna be in the loop, if you don't mind.
No, no problem.
We're trying.
Uh, are you okay with going forward that way? Kevin?
That's a good idea. Check with the grant money because they put a lot of things in place, but obviously it's gonna cost money.
Right. And with our spending freeze and, you know, we're in a rock and a hard place. So we'll, we'll check on that tomorrow and then we'll, we'll see what we're gonna do going forward from there. You good with that?
Yes, thank you.
So we're gonna open the tennis court, basketball court and put up signs that there's no, no more than five people on the court at a time or something like that? More than four people, whatever, pick a number.
That would work. Ten.
Five.
Eight.
We should be able to limit the people too.
Eight.
Well, eight, you can do four and four. So I think you wanna, like, four might be the right number. Then they might get to two on two, but you're still pretty spread out.
Tennis, as, um, Mr. Pilli has said, Kevin, that, um, that wouldn't be a problem because you get the two courts and they're spread out this point of distance. The only thing is we have to say that, uh, no doubles, that type of thing, because then you're pretty close to each other. So you can play single tennis, but no doubles.
The only good thing is a lot of times when you, when you go with someone else, you're in the same household already. It's when you pick up a bunch of people and play basketball, you know? That's when you're introducing the transmission, you know?
But, so I'd like to ask that the Board of Health still request that one basketball hoop be taken down at every court in town. And also if possible, because people are chomping at the bit to use these fields to reach out to the highway superintendent to see if he can mow these locations. I know they're working and doing their thing. But these people are chopping and they wanna get on these fields.
Yeah, this week we had the bulky item pickup and that took up a lot of time of PPW workers, but we can talk to them and see about standing back on a regular schedule.
They've been very busy, so I witnessed that myself, so.
My recommendation is if it sounds like a contact sport and it's for phase three, then just tell them to hold off. If, if, if the way they explain it is a contact sport, then it's not yet. They wanna, they wanna practice, it's fine. Get, you know, that flag football league practice beforehand, but no real games, almost like the baseball, until that phase comes up.
Correct.
Good enough. I'm good with that. Tim, is that all the answers you needed?
Yes, if, um, if, like, if you guys, you just put something quick
We can talk tomorrow too and stuff, so.
I'd like to, well, just take this time to thank the Board of Health for, uh, having me tonight, uh, this evening, Chairman of the Paco Rec in town and, um, I believe that we'll get this figured out and we'll get it done. So I appreciate your time. Thank you again and be safe and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Much better than having your phone. Thanks, guys.
Take care. Have a good night. Moving on to the next item. Are we ready? Code Red?
Oh.
You're giving that one. Not, not that one. You gotta
Give anyone an update on how many people?
I, we actually have, as of last Saturday, 3,971 residents in the town of Dayton that have now signed up for Code Red. So great job, everyone, and please spread the word. We can get everyone in town signed up. It would be wonderful. Thanks.
Oh, very nice.
It is quite a few. There you go, unmuted.
Kevin, can you hear me? Obviously not. Kevin?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, the next order of business was for trash bag sales. I know we spoke about this many times. We resolved it. Cost of bags went up on June 1st to a dollar a bag for small and $2 for large. I don't know if you're aware of it, there was a lot of, quite a bit of feedback regarding the cost increase. As we're going on the Board of Selectmen meeting tonight to be able to quantify why we had requested to raise the price of, uh, the bags and we'll do that approximately at 7:30 with the Board of Selectmen. However, I, I was, uh, I had a thought and I'm not sure we wanna go this way. But bags are presently bought in rolls of 10. In our contract for the price that we receive is to package in rolls of 10. But I was thinking about, uh, for the sake of our senior population and those, uh, less fortunate on a purchase that asking some of the vendors, asking the vendors if they wouldn't mind selling them by singles. You know, some may wanna come in and, cause they own the bags once they get them. Uh, it would be their option to sell by singles or not. Uh, I wouldn't wanna sell by singles here because we don't have the staff to do it. Uh, and as we saw this week with the purchase of the, um, bulky item pickups, uh, half the week, half the hour spent in this office was probably spent on disposing and selling of, uh, bulky mail stickers. So I don't get your feeling on uh, putting it out to the vendors about selling individual bags. Kevin?
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that way there is somebody, you know, only wanted to
The, the selectmen are gonna, the selectmen are gonna speak about the the increase in bags, the, the feedback they got from the town residents?
Well, it, it's already done. Um, we're not gonna retract of what we've, uh, done so far. Um, I, I think what they wanted us this evening for was to just, uh, explain to the people the costs associated with, uh, solid waste removal and disposal and try to justify why we did this. And I think once everyone sees why it was done, uh, that will probably help quell some of the questions that are, that are out there. Why, why are we going up? Um, as you know, it was originally, uh, pay-as-you-throw program was to just defray the cost of the pickup and disposal. Over the last couple of years, it's increased dramatically. So we, you know, the, the fact that we had to increase the bags is is if we didn't increase the bags, it would just go to general taxation. So
Yeah.
Uh, six of one, half dozen the other. But I like the pay-as-you-throw program because my thoughts are if a family, uh, if it's general taxation, a family that may use five lodge bags versus a family that may use one small bag, it's just not fair and equitable to that, uh, person that uses less bags, which is why I like pay-as-you-throw.
Yeah, of course.
But, uh, and that's what the point we're trying to get across to people. That, uh, if you don't, we have, it's, it is what it is. You know, the cost associated with the with all of this continue to rise and we actually, our numbers indicate that we were way behind. It's not even close to, uh, what we were receiving before in funds to offset the cost. So, uh, if you're okay with
I don't know if you wanna show them that, um, the average that we did with all the other towns.
Yeah, we've got all the information that, uh, and how much of the cost uh, is used for the disposal and so forth. And the last couple of years, I guess, has been the worst, huh?
Yes, well, the, the, the hauling contract has gone up, the, the price to dispose of the trash has gone up. It's, it's gone up significantly. But we also have a recycling program that's free in town. So people can put as much as they want in the recycle bin. And we've also started the textile recycling program, which is another way that people can use to try and reduce the trash and avoid buying bags. So we've implemented, there's, there's things they can do to reduce their trash.
Okay, so.
It hurts everyone. When it hurts your pocket, that's when you get that. I, I'm, I live in town. I'm paying the same bag price. It, this just helps offset the costs.
Right.
If we had that whole cost to deal with, we, our tax would be a lot higher.
Correct. So are you okay with us reaching out to the vendors and
Yeah.
they wanna sell individual bags? Okay.
Well, if I can just jump in for a second, um, when Matt called us to say he wasn't coming in, he said he kind of opposed to it because now you got these vendors that are gonna be opening the package and all that. So I don't want somebody necessarily walking into a store, this is me personally now, and saying, I want one bag and the vendor is obligated to sell the bag. I think it's, if the vendor wants to, they can
Oh, it'll be an option. It won't be.
Not mandatory.
No.
We're not doing it here.
As, as long as they're doing it where it comes out the same price.
Right.
So they're not trying to make, so if they're $20 for the whole shebang and they're not go, they're not going $3 a bag now, some outrageous price, you know, for breaking the package. No.
Sorry, doesn't allow them to do that. We would probably, to those people who are willing to do it, it's gonna be their option. We will probably be creating a new contract for them. That the sales of the bags, no matter, no matter how they sell in rolls of 10 or singles, uh, the cost will only be $2 for a bag or $1 for a bag on the small, so.
Yeah, I don't, personally, I don't see why a vendor would wanna do it. It's so much more work for them to, to try and do it that way. So, but they, it's an option.
Yeah, I mean, we'd like to throw it out as an option and they don't, they can do it or don't have to do it. Uh, and if we go forward with this, we'll, we'll put out notification of which, which vendors sell singles and which don't. It's a little more work, but I, I think for the, uh, money-wise, for those people who may not wanna buy a roll of 10 or have a problem buying a roll of 10, that singles would be an option. So maybe the vendors won't wanna do it. No, 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 sorry.
Do we need a vote?
I think we should have a vote.
Chairman, I, uh, make a motion that we let the, we approach the vendors to see if they would, uh, sell single bags.
At their option.
At their option.
Right, okay. I'll step down in a second. Uh, motion made secondary for the discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor.
Aye.
Aye for myself. Motion carried. We will reach out to the vendors and see what happens with that. So, thank you. I think you're up again. I don't want anybody on here for, any public input? Any, anybody on there?
Nobody in the waiting room.
Okay. Anything else, Kevin?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Todd.
Yeah. Hold on. Why are you reverbing over there? Alright, so the first thing I wanna do is thank Mr. Pires. He's been coming in, uh, the office about a couple days this week. It was a couple, day last week, whatever. And he's coming in tomorrow. Um, we have been overwhelmed as staff, both Rosalind and I, trying to keep up with the day-to-day when falling behind in subject plan reviews and such. Uh, Tom's come in and he's been doing a fair amount of paperwork. And, um, it's been very helpful and it's taken hours away from, you know, from giving us hours to be able to continue to do our job. So first off, I wanted to thank him. Uh, we had the FEP grant, the Public Health Emergency Planning Grant, that we had gotten where they gave us they gave us $4,500 and then $4,500. We were supposed to get a third installment, but they took it away and made it the CARES grant, which the town of Dayton got a lot of money in that. But the FEP grant, we were obligated for covering costs mainly associated with the tracking and such. So the town nurse, all the hours she's put in with all the contact tracing is being paid for by that. We've also gotten some other expenses, including the Code Red mailer, and bought some personal protective equipment. And we got a Dropbox installed here at Old Town Hall. We've effectively spent the entire $9,000 of the grant money, and it worked out very well. So any additional expenses that are happening now are gonna be coming out of the CARES grant. So we are tracking that, and we have to, we had to provide estimates till the end of June and then till the end of December. But there are some expenses, and some of it is, is staff overtime, which is why, part of the reason why Tom is here, is to help alleviate some of that. So just wanted to let everybody know where we're at with that. And then.
Hey, Todd.
We talked about this. This is a letter from our building commissioner that he wrote. And you want to talk about the whole thing?
I think he just wanted the board.
All right, so it was one of the, we talked about the library's opening for curbside. And right now, as far as the reopening committee is concerned, which consists of the fire chief, the building commissioner, the Board of Health agent, and the town administrator, is the library can't be opening anytime soon for people to come in. Social distancing is almost impossible in that building. There's not a lot of space. The sink for the bathroom is in the hallway, so disinfecting would have to happen far more often than the break room is in the, in with the office. It's just not really conducive for being a public space in phase two, and probably not phase three. It may be phase four, but at this point in time, it is, is to remain close to the public indefinitely. So Jim just wanted everybody to be aware of that. Peter Borges, our trash hauler, had pointed out to us that the tonnage for trash has gone up somewhere around 25% for both trash and recycling in tonnage over last year's numbers, obviously due to COVID-19. But he's keeping up with it, but it's, it's just more trash. So I don't think I have anything else, but Roz would like to fill everybody in on our bulky tag status.
So this week we're doing the bulky item pickup. Last year, 2019, we sold 90 tags. So there were 90 items that were picked up. And this year, we actually were advertising on social media, just trying to get the word out to people. We had the traffic alert signage that you've seen out on some of the streets, letting people know about the program. So this year, we've actually sold 450 stickers. So thank you, everyone, for participating. And thank you, the Highway Department, because they have done a lot of work in going around to curbside and picking up all these items. So thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I think people being home has helped a lot of people clean out their garages, and they have an opportunity to get rid of stuff that they couldn't normally get rid of. The transfer station is open year round, and any of these bulky items that people can't get picked up this week, they can bring to the transfer station. The price is the same. The only difference is you need a sticker to get into the transfer station, and that's $15. And that's all I have.
Todd, I had a question. Can you hear me?
The correspondent, so yeah, but that was it.
Todd?
That was it, okay. Kevin, did you have an opportunity to read the minutes of May 13, May 20, and June 1? Only the 13th?
No, I didn't get, I didn't get it yet.
May 13, did you see those?
No.
Okay, that, that's fine. I know you're busy up there with the state, so.
I had a quick question. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Todd, can you hear me? The CARES Act, you said, that money, is that only COVID?
It is only for things to do with COVID, like if you need to hire additional staff, things to keep your office running through the COVID. So for example, like personal protective equipment, if we need to get a hand sanitizer station at like the exit of a town building, these are things that can be covered. This money, the guy can also be used by the schools, and they're supposed to be putting together a list of what they need in order to make this happen. So.
So, so right now, the, right now, it's in with the selectmen, and we have to just find out if we can utilize that money somehow?
Well, right now, both Rosalind and myself are both being paid for for any overtime and additional hours we're getting. That is definitely being paid for with CARES. There's other stuff that we're talking about that we need, like again, these hand sanitizer stations at the exits, if we need to do more cleaning of the porta potties, these are the kind of things that can be put in for. We've had additional cleaning at Town Hall. The cleaning service, actually, I don't know if you saw it on camera, she went through here a little while ago, and they're doing cleanings daily, basically, a light cleaning, and they do a heavy cleaning on the weekends. And so that would be a cost that would be also coverable by CARES.
Okay. All right, that's, that's all I had.
Now, I had asked you about the minutes of May 13. You didn't get to see those, correct?
I didn't get to see it. Yeah, I don't know if it came in today or.
Okay.
They might have.
Yeah, so I didn't, I didn't get to look at it yet, but I will look at it for the next meeting.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, we can table item number eight, approve the minutes, if you don't mind.
Motion to table minutes.
Step down in a second, all favor.
Aye.
Aye myself, all opposed. Okay, table those minutes till our next meeting. And if there's nothing else, anybody have anything? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll step down in a second. A motion to adjourn. So the meeting is adjourned, whatever. Actually, it's seven o'clock. And so everybody have a good weekend, stay safe, and protect yourself, because very soon the mosquitoes will be out there. So have a good evening. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Good night.